Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, November 10th. I'm Rob Walter, Board Chair, and I think we're gonna skip the introductions so after the opening ceremony, but if you'd please rise with me for the opening ceremony.
Forward, march! Colors, march! Right, march! Forward, march!
Thank you. Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Major Caleb Edinburgh, Cadet Captain Justin Scott, Cadet Captain William Farrell, and Cadet Captain Kaylee Doster. Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem were members of the Mount Pleasant High School Band. The Director of the Mount Pleasant High School Band Program is Mr. Keith Lee. Thank you.
You may be seated. That was a powerful rendition, very excellent job, and congratulations, a great band season. So I'm gonna back up to our introductions and greetings on 1.02 and share, introduce the, introduce my colleagues on the dais up here. I have on my left side Madison Little, our Teacher of the Year representative, welcome. Board Member Shannon Lancaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Tredaway, our Superintendent Dr. Kapicki. On my right, I have my Vice Chair Greg Mills, Board Member Pam Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman. So we will move on to item three, 4.01, three, I'm sorry, which is called "A Moment of Silence," and let me read this before we share a moment of silence together. At this time, we want to pause for a moment of silence to honor the lives and legacies of Mr. Larry Riggs and Mr. Lynn Shu, both of whom passed away last week. Mr. Riggs was a dedicated educator, coach, and leader who served Cabarrus County Schools for 35 years, including 25 years as Principal of WR Odell Elementary School. Prior to becoming a principal, Mr. Riggs taught and coached basketball at Hartzell and Central Cabarrus, and retired from the school system back in 1996. And Mr. Lynn Shu was elected to the Cabarrus County Board of Education in the year 2000 and served for multiple terms, including two years as Chair from 2011 to 2013, and he was the Chair when I joined the Board in 2012. Since 2014, he had continued his public service as a member of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, where his leadership and advocacy continue to benefit our schools and community. So let us now join in a moment of silent prayer to reflect on the lives, on their lives, their service, and the lasting impact that they made on Cabarrus County Schools, students, staff, and families that they faithfully served. Thank you. Okay, Board Members, we're gonna move on to item 4.01, which is adoption of our agenda. We've had the agenda published since Thursday afternoon, and I would need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any further discussion of the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Our agenda is set for the evening, and we will move on to our Impact Through Education Award with Mr. Phil Farr. He'll lead off our recognitions. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Patriots STEM Elementary School and Cabarrus Early College of Technology. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I'd like to invite our Equitable representative Lauren Barklow to join us at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, I'd like to offer our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, Equitable continues their 16th year partnering with us to honor those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate their support and thank them for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I have the Patriots STEM Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Patriots is Assad Jackson. Assad, please come forward with your family. Assad is a 5th grade student who was nominated for the Impact Through Education Award by Patriots Encore Teachers. The art teacher, Ms. Miller, shared, "It is my pleasure to recommend Assad Jackson for the Impact Through Education Award. I've had the privilege of teaching Mr. Jackson for the past couple of years and also working with him as one of our school's pals. Assad is a remarkable student who consistently demonstrates leadership, kindness, and a genuine desire to help others. He leads by example every day, showing initiative, responsibility, and respect for everyone around him. Teachers and classmates alike know they can count on Assad, whether it's helping a peer understand the lesson, assisting in the classroom, or simply offering a friendly word of encouragement. His positive attitude and strong work ethic make a lasting impact on his school community. Assad truly embodies what it means to make an impact through education. Congratulations, Assad. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Patriots STEM Elementary." Our next honoree from Patriots is Finley Thorpe. Finley, please come forward with your family. Finley is a 5th grade student who was nominated for the Impact Through Education Award by her Encore Teachers. The media specialist, Ms. Nicholson, shared, "It is my pleasure to recommend Finley Thorpe for the Impact Through Education Award. I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Thorpe in our school media center, where she has demonstrated exceptional character, initiative, and leadership skills. This year, I've seen remarkable growth in Ms. Thorpe. She is truly coming into her own, showing greater confidence, independence, and a strong sense of responsibility. Whether she is assisting her peers, supporting her school community, or taking the initiative to solve problems, she consistently leads by example. Ms. Thorpe stands out as someone who goes above and beyond. She is dependable, hardworking, and always willing to help without being asked. More importantly, she approaches every task with a positive attitude and genuine care for others. Her willingness to step forward in her emerging leadership skills make her an outstanding representative of our school's values. It has been a joy to watch Ms. Thorpe grow, not only in confidence and maturity, but also in her ability to uplift those around her. I am proud to recommend her for this award and confident she will continue to make a positive impact wherever she goes. Congratulations, Finley. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Patriots STEM Elementary." Also from Patriots is support staff member Marina Freeman. Ms. Freeman, please come forward with your family. Marina Freeman brings heart and dedication in her role as an instructional assistant at Patriots STEM Elementary School. Her impact is felt schoolwide as she works closely with students across all grade levels, including providing support in our structured learning classes. Ms. Freeman often serves as a bridge between school and home, stepping in as an interpreter to ensure our Spanish-speaking students and families feel fully seen and heard. She is always willing to help wherever she is needed, whether assisting in classrooms, collaborating with teachers, or offering one-on-one support for students. Ms. Freeman's kind and caring nature make her a trusted and beloved figure among students and staff. Her quiet strength and constant presence make a lasting difference in the lives of everybody she serves. Congratulations, Marina. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Patriots STEM Elementary. And finally, from Patriots is teacher Sean Kirby. Mr. Kirby, please come forward with your family. Mr. Sean Kirby exemplifies the heart, dedication, and tireless commitment that define the Impact Through Education Award. As a 4th grade teacher at Patriots STEM Elementary, Mr. Kirby consistently goes above and beyond to ensure every student feels seen, supported, and inspired to succeed. He is the embodiment of the phrase "all day, every day, whatever it takes." From arriving early to provide free tutoring, to using his students' home language to build deeper connections, Mr. Kirby creates a classroom where every child knows they are valued and capable. His students don't just learn, they thrive, because they know their teacher believes in them. Whether it's providing extra support to those who need it most, or staying fully engaged from the morning bell to the final seconds of the day, Mr. Kirby's impact is felt far beyond academics. His unwavering dedication, compassion, and ability to build meaningful relationships make a lasting difference in the lives of his students. Congratulations, Sean. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Patriots STEM Elementary School. We will now continue with our November Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming to Cabarrus Early College of Technology. May I have the Cabarrus Tech Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from CECT is Hannah Clark. Hannah, please come forward with your family. Hannah Clark, daughter of Jamie and Ryan Clark, is a senior at Cabarrus Tech who leads with integrity, humility, and purpose. With a 4.8 weighted high school GPA and a 4.0 college GPA, she'll graduate with both her high school diploma and an Associate in Arts degree before continuing her studies in finance at UNC Charlotte. As President of the Student Government Association, Hannah has guided her peers with kindness and vision, always putting others first. She's admired for her calm leadership, servant heart, and ability to make others feel valued and heard. Beyond the classroom, Hannah is active in Vex Robotics, Purpose Partners, Math Club, and the National Honor Society. For three years, she has served as a Sherpa, monitoring new students, mentoring new students, and this year, training others as a Lead Sherpa. A senior member of the robotics team, she has grown from a beginner to a mentor who inspires confidence in her teammates. Hannah also serves as a student ambassador and represents Cabarrus Tech on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. Her teachers and peers describe her as a go-to person who leads by example and uplifts those around her. As she graduates, we celebrate not only Hannah's accomplishments, but also her character. Congratulations, Hannah. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Early College of Technology. Our next honoree from CECT is Garov Talavahala. Garov, please come forward with your family. Garov Talavahala is a junior at Cabarrus Tech with a 4.6 weighted high school GPA and a 3.8 college GPA. On track to graduate next year with both his high school diploma and an Associate in Arts degree, Garov exemplifies excellence, service, and leadership. As co-founder and co-president of the Multicultural Club, Garov has created a welcoming space for students to share and celebrate their cultures. His leadership helped organize events like the Feast of Nations and represent Cabarrus Tech at the Concord International Festival, strengthening the school's sense of community and inclusion. Beyond that, Garov is an active member of the Math Club, where he tutors classmates with patience and positivity, and co-president of the Arts Club, where he channels creativity into collaboration. From designing sets for the school's Alice in Wonderland production to leading student art projects, he encourages others to express themselves and take pride in their work. Garov's enthusiasm, humility, and dedication make him a role model amongst his peers and a truly deserving recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations, Garov. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Early College of Technology. Next, from Cabarrus Tech is staff member Tempest Simpson. Ms. Simpson, please come forward with your family. Ms. Tempest Simpson is one of the first smiling faces to greet you at Cabarrus Tech, and in just her second year, she has made a remarkable and lasting impact in our school community. Serving as treasurer, data manager, receptionist, registrar, and backup nurse, Ms. Simpson wears many hats with grace and excellence. In larger schools, each of those roles would be handled by separate people, but she manages them all with efficiency, professionalism, and care. On any given day, you might find her assisting a parent, comforting a student, processing purchase orders, or supporting administrators with data, all while maintaining her trademark warmth and positivity. Her compassion reaches far beyond her daily duties. She's always ready to listen, lend a helping hand, or offer encouragement to those who need it. Recently, she even earned her Associate's Degree, setting an inspiring example of perseverance and lifelong learning for our students. Ms. Simpson's dedication and willingness to do whatever it takes makes Cabarrus Tech a better place for everyone. For her kindness, professionalism, and extraordinary impact, we are proud to honor Ms. Tempest Simpson as an Impact Through Education Award recipient. Congratulations, Tempest. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Early College of Technology. And finally, from Cabarrus Tech is Counselor Stacy Diaz. Ms. Diaz couldn't be here tonight, because she's doing what defines so many of our Impact Award winners and going above and beyond the call of duty for her students. I am going to read what was written about Ms. Diaz. Ms. Stacy Diaz is one of the most dedicated and inspiring counselors Cabarrus Tech has ever had. Since joining our school, her leadership, creativity, and compassion have transformed our counseling program into one that supports the whole child and uplifts the entire community. Under her direction, Cabarrus Tech earned national recognition as a recognized ASCA Model Program, one of only 155 schools nationwide honored for comprehensive, data-driven counseling that fosters academic, social, emotional, and career success. Her efforts also earned state recognition as a CFNC Financial Aid Champion, helping every student and family access FAFSA and college planning resources. Ms. Diaz's creativity shines in the experiences she designs for students, from her week-long de-stress fest before exams to scavenger hunts and activities that promote mental health and connection. She also leads and supports clubs that celebrate culture and service, including the Multicultural Club's Feast of Nations, the For Ingenuity Opportunity Mentoring Program, and the Theater Club, where she even performs alongside students. Beyond Cabarrus Tech, Ms. Diaz serves as President-elect of the North Carolina School Counselor Association and works with El Puente Hispanio to advocate for equitable access for families. Ms. Diaz leads with heart, vision, and an unwavering belief in every student's potential. She truly embodies what it means to make an impact through education. Congratulations, Stacy. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Early College of Technology. This concludes our Impact Award presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Well-deserved recognitions. We're gonna move on to 5.02, which is the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Dr. Michael Williams, podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and those watching the live screen. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for November. We would again like to offer our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Mr. Josh Forrester and their team at Hilbisch Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hilbisch Ford Teacher for the Month of November is U.S. Army Veteran Mia Green, a 4th grade teacher at Pitt School Road Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Green, her family, members of the Pitt School Road Administrative Team, and all of her kids that are here today to come forward. All right, Ms. Green, here we go. You ready? You're, you were nominated for this award by a dozen parents. Tonight, I'm going to share two of the nominations. First nominee, the first nominator said, "My daughter's teacher this year is so deserving of this award. She is a teacher because she is passionate about her kids, or her family, as she very often refers to them. My daughter had a particularly hard week last month, and Mrs. Green went above and beyond to reaffirm how special she was, and even left her a small treat inside her desk. She is also always encouraging her to be amazing, telling her constantly that she believes in her. Ms. Green deserves to be recognized for her dedication and her love of teaching." Second nomination I want to read to you says, "Mrs. Green is the most phenomenal teacher I've ever encountered. She is currently teaching my twins, and her communication and dedication have been exceptional. The support she provides to her students is truly unmatched. Mrs. Green goes above and beyond to ensure every child feels valued, understood, and encouraged to reach their full potential. What sets her apart is her genuine investment in her students' lives beyond the classroom. She takes the time to attend their birthday parties, sporting events, and other activities outside of school, showing that her care for them extends far beyond academics. Her presence means so much to the children and families she supports. Her passion for teaching shines through in everything she does. She creates a positive, nurturing learning environment where every student feels seen and inspired. It's rare to find a teacher who not only educates, but also uplifts and connects so deeply with her students and their families. I feel incredibly grateful that my children get to experience 4th grade with her. Mrs. Green is a rare gem in education, and the impact she has on her students will last a lifetime. Ms. Green, thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom and the families of Pitt School Road Elementary School, and thank you for your service to the United States of America. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month." the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. That's really a first. We've never had a whole class come out to support a teacher. Ms. Green, you are a hero, so we appreciate you. We'll move on to 5.03, which is the Everyday Hero Award. We have Dr. Bowers, and we have Taylor as well, or just Dr. Bowers?
Just me tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. If I could have Mr. David Fox join me down front, and any special guests that may be with him tonight. This evening is once again my pleasure to stand before you and recognize this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, this award recognizes a member from our auxiliary services team who consistently goes above and beyond by impacting the lives of others through kindness, selflessness, and an unwavering dedication to service. This month's recipient is Mr. David Fox, lead plumber for Cabarrus County Schools. Mr. Fox has had an indelible impact on Cabarrus County Schools during his 25 years of service to students and families. David is someone who truly represents the heart and spirit of our school district, and his steadfast commitment to excellence is commendable. David began his career with Cabarrus County Schools two and a half decades ago, and over the years, his ingenuity, his energy, and his professionalism have become the gold standard for the members of our facilities team. David is a trusted presence in our schools. He is respected by his peers, and he is admired by those who support him. David has been a mentor and a role model for so many of our plumbers. He has shared his knowledge, his patience, and his commitment to excellence, and always leads by example. David was instrumental in spearheading the on-demand-style boilers and water heaters that have become a CCS standard throughout our facilities and construction projects. His steady leadership and calm presence have made a true lasting impact. David, please know how much you are appreciated and celebrated. On behalf of Cabarrus County Schools and our entire facilities department, we thank you for your decades of service, your compassion, and the positive example you've set for all of us.
Okay. We'll move on to item 5.04, which is the 2025 District 6 Outstanding Elementary Science Teacher Award, and we have Dr. Parker at the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, the board, and Dr. Kapicki. I am so excited to recognize Ms. Jessica Espinoza from Culture Web Elementary School this evening. If she could come on up with the Culture Web Admin team, that would be wonderful. So tonight, I am so excited to recognize Culture Web STEM Elementary Innovation Lab Teacher, Ms. Jessica Espinoza, for being named the 2025 District 6 Outstanding Elementary Science Teacher by the North Carolina Science Teachers Association. She was honored in October at the North Carolina Science Teacher Association 2025 PDI Award Ceremony in Winston-Salem. The Outstanding Science Teacher Award acknowledges elementary, middle grades, and secondary-level science educators from each of the eight educational districts in North Carolina who exemplify excellence in instructional practice. This award is an extension of the association's goal to improve and expand and advance science teaching in all fields of science at all education levels throughout North Carolina. Ms. Espinoza was selected by other North Carolina science educators for this award based on her outstanding scientific knowledge, collaborative spirit, effective instruction, engagement, and professional development, and all-around contributions to science teaching and learning inside her school and across the state. Ms. Espinoza works tirelessly every day, not just to make science come alive for all of our students, but she also gives so much to help all of our staff in her school and beyond. She is a true representative of the CWES, and this award is a testament to her continued dedication and hard work. Please join me in giving a big round of applause for Ms. Espinoza.
Oh, it's the best part of our meeting. We'll move on to Section 6, with 6.01 as the approval of minutes. We've had minutes from our three meetings. Was our planning session back in September, our work session, and our business meetings for October. So those have been out there for board members to review. Do we have any changes, or if not, I'd like a motion and a second to approve the minutes for those three meetings?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Treadway.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All in favor of approving our minutes, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, our minutes are approved. We'll move on to Section 7, which is Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. Before I get into mine, I do want to recognize our SRO for the evening, Mr. Matthew Wilson. Thank you for being here. SRO at Mount Pleasant Middle School. And then I also saw our county commissioner Laura Lindsay sneak in here, so thank you for being here as well. So with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I'd really like to just take a moment to honor and thank all who have served and continue to serve our country. We are especially grateful for the veterans within Cabarrus County Schools, and we have a number of those, and throughout our community. Your service and sacrifice allow us to have the freedoms that we enjoy every day. Also looking ahead to Thanksgiving this month, so it's a wonderful time to pause and reflect on the many things that we have to be grateful for. I'm very thankful for our board and the commitment that they have to students. It's exceptional, the time and sacrifice that they give every day. I'm also appreciative of our dedicated teachers, our students, staff, and the teamwork and collaboration among everyone that supports our schools. Just like to wish everybody a happy, safe, and restful Thanksgiving. And with that, I will move on to 7.02, which is Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Again, I want to take a brief moment to honor the special group that we will recognize tomorrow, and hopefully we do this not just tomorrow, but every day of the year, because it is important to celebrate our veterans every day. And as we observe our Veterans Day tomorrow, I want to take a moment to share my gratitude for the men and women who have served and worn our nation's uniform, and for the veterans and military families within our Cabarrus County Schools' community. The courage, service, and leadership they embody are the values we strive to model for our students every day. Veterans Day holds significance to all of us. Personally, I'm mindful of the sacrifices, both seen and unseen, that military service requires, including long separations from family, missed milestones, and the willingness to sacrifice so that others can learn, work, and live in peace. Our schools are able to promote a promising future because of that commitment, and we do not take it for granted. To our Cabarrus County staff who are veterans, to our families, to our communities who are veterans, I say thank you. Your example of service over self strengthens our culture and reminds our students what character looks like in action. As we pause to honor Veterans Day, I hope each of us finds time to reflect on the meaning of service, extend gratitude to a veteran or military family, and remember the efforts and the sacrifices our veterans had made for all of us. I hope you all enjoy a restful day and know in our hearts that we are so deeply appreciative of your service. So again, I just want to say thank you to them. I think they are an extraordinary special group of men and women that have put their lives on the line for all of us to make sure that we get to do the things we do every day that we probably do take for granted, but they cannot. And I am very grateful and appreciative to all of our veterans. In my own way, I'm saluting you and saying have a wonderful, happy Veterans Day tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. So we'll move on to our next section, with our guest speakers. And we had a few individuals sign up ahead of time, so we've got four that we'll call on. The rules for being a public speaker, that's all on our agenda, they've read through that. So if you're with a group, you get five minutes. If you're an individual, it's three minutes. And I'm going to start with the first individual signed up, which was Chris Ray from Barbra Scotia College. Are you here? You are here. Welcome. And you are speaking on behalf of the group, so you've got five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Cabarrus County Board of Education, and esteemed guests who are all here. I'm sorry. My name is Chris Ray, and I have the honor of serving as the 20th president of Barbra Scotia College, located right here in the heart of Concord, North Carolina. For those of you who may not know, Barbra Scotia College is one of our nation's oldest historically black colleges and universities founded in 1867, just two years after the Civil War by the Presbyterian Church to educate newly freed women from slavery. For more than 158 years, this institution has been a pillar of education, empowerment, and faith in Cabarrus County and across the South. Our graduates have become teachers, pastors, entrepreneurs, civic leaders, public servants, and have made an incredible mark on our communities. When I arrived as president, Barbra Scotia had not housed students in over 10 years, and the campus had gone quiet for almost two decades. And still, I believe, even though I had to think about why I took that job. But Barbra Scotia's story obviously was not finished. Over the past two years, we have launched a comprehensive revitalization effort called BSC Rising. This initiative is more than a slogan. It is a movement to restore our facilities, rebuild our academic programs, and reimagine how this historic college serves today's students and its community. I am proud to report that as of this fall, we have more than 100 students that are now again living and learning on our campus, a milestone we haven't celebrated in nearly two decades. Our Residence Hall's Faith Hall is now open. Our students are engaging in community service, leadership development, and academic preparation, and we are introducing, of course, athletics for the first time in years. What a headache that is. With men's and women's basketball, of course, now we have a football team, baseball, and we just announced volleyball and golf, which will be starting in the spring. Programs that we are excited that students giving them opportunities to compete and represent Concord proudly as Sabres. But this revitalization isn't just about Barbra Scotia, it's about Cabarrus County. Our goal is to be an active partner in the educational ecosystem, creating pathways from high school to college right here at home. We want local students to see Barbra Scotia as a place where they can grow academically, develop their leadership, and stay connected to their community. That is why I'm proud to announce that the Board of Trustees has approved our Hometown Program that allows for any student that graduates from a Cabarrus County High School with 2.0 or better is automatically admitted to Barbra Scotia College. My goal is simple. Access to education should not be a barrier for building our region, which requires us to build an even stronger, higher educational institution. Barbra Scotia College will be the hometown option for our students, and to attend is only $2,500 a semester, $5,000 a year. That vision also includes a deep commitment to accessibility and inclusion. At Barbra Scotia College, we are intentional about ensuring that all students, including those who are deaf or hard at hearing, blind or have low vision, and students with other disabilities have equal access to education, campus life, and opportunities. We will be launching what is called Sabre Thrive, an initiative that we're partnering with compassionate counseling services to provide college readiness programs for students with disabilities. We're building partnerships to expand assistive technology, improve accessible housing, and create programs that empower every student to succeed, because true education leaves no one behind. We are also expanding partnerships with high schools in dual enrollment, workforce readiness, college prep programs, particularly in areas of entrepreneurship, technology, and the arts. And we're working with local churches, nonprofits, and businesses to ensure that our students and yours are equipped for success. The spirit of Barbra Scotia is one of resilience, restoration, and belief, and our motto is "Believe." We believe that education transforms lives. We believe that collaboration strengthens communities, and we believe that the best days of Barbra Scotia College, and for Cabarrus County, is still ahead. So tonight, I want to just thank you for your vital work that you do to nurture the next generation of learners, and I extend an open invitation for each of you to visit our campus, meet our students, and to see firsthand the incredible transformation taking place. Together, we can build a bridge of opportunity between public schools and our historic college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. If someone's interested in learning more about this, do you have a website that they could...
Absolutely. www.b-sc.edu. I want to get that hyphen out, but I can't, so it's a little quirky, but b-sc.edu. But I welcome each and every one of you to come to the campus at some point, and we look forward to welcoming you so you can see the amazing things that we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you also very much.
All right. Our next speaker is Mr. Thomas Hatcher. Are you here? Okay, he could not make it. We'll move on to number three, which is Mr. Paul Wannas. And you are also speaking for a group. Just kind of give us an overview of that group real quick.
It's an organization to help underserved people, underserved kids in the community.
And it's I-S-O-C-C-S?
Correct. Good evening, board members and staff. Let me start with compliments to the district for aggressively improving the communications channels. Though not easy, extended family can be added to Parent Square, and Phil Furr has put out some great Friday fives. I've seen more weekly planning from other teachers. These are critical if the parents are supposed to be involved as you improve the district's rank. But all this is good, all this good news comes with some things that would help us a lot. Develop a consistent assignment workflow, from the beginning of the weekly planner for a whole class to work assignments assigned to each individual pupil, and when it's due with trivial teacher interfaces to push the work to the pupils. A consistent human interface. Students have the same, students should have the same portal as the parents. Today, they do not. You have to have two different systems. You don't know what your kids are looking at. They don't know what you're looking at. Portals need features to select information by due date, by latest classes, by grades that they received. Information must always be available to students and families from the home and from school. Chromebooks and personal Windows systems at home work transparently as if they were working at school. There is a problem with all these areas today. Most important step is to enforce all classes throughout the district to implement this and actually post stuff so that parents can see what the kids are getting assigned and what is due. I've seen some in math. Math, I'm very logical people. You see dozens and dozens... You see dozens and dozens of assignments, other ones you get one a week. With these few consist, with these confused, with these few consistent steps, much better automation can be applied, like immediate information to pupils and families on what's coming, what needs to be turned in, and as it's being late, and potentially when it's waiting on teacher's time to grade them. It could easily be automated notice to, that homework will be late in two days rather than being late and starting family fights. The families would finally be able to know what's going on in class with the homework. But offsetting this would be with less teacher and family communication. The district needs to embrace technology and stop just tolerating it. On a different topic you all heard me highlight, most module units fail to comply with North Carolina building codes. Clearly, the building inspectors should have caught these things decades ago. But I've come to find out the problem stems mostly from the School Board Construction Department. While they knew they needed a building permits, they failed to realize they also needed to pass the county or municipality's zoning development ordinances, which review, development ordinance review called a Design Review Committee, D R C. And looking at only 23 sites in Concord since 2022, there were about 10 building permits issued, and almost two-thirds of those reviews were not attended by CCS. Again, the city ordinance requires CCS to comply. You've done well with the Coltrane Web rebuild, but others are not so good. I suspect you lack the architectural support for most of your building permits. While homes rise in suburban developments, CCS schools are being put up in pastors. CCS puts in private roads on every site. Since you don't have a public right of way, you've, you finally, your final product is inferior to the communities you serve and get no service from the city or the county they're in. Every road should be public. That would improve the conditions for over 40,000 cars that traverse these roads every day. Finally, a public record request for the October Biennial Report, I've gotten no answers or has gone unanswered. I can only assume, again, the district broke the Carolina law on class size, which says they have to have a report twice a year for every class in every building, in every site. I thank you for, oh, one last one. There was this last ballot we had, had no proposal from the commissioners for a bond for school funds. So next year, when you find out you're short of schools again, there won't be any way to fund it even if they wanted to, so it's another two years before you're even going to start on any building. So you're, unless they can get another bond set up, you're well behind the eight ball. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wannas. And my final speaker is Ms. Kisha Garido. Are you here? There you are. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Kipiki, Mr. Walters, and members of the board. I'm thankful for the opportunity to once again, and before you can speak. I would first like to praise the Mount Pleasant Band for their beautiful rendition of the Star-Spangled Banner this evening. I'm proud to say that I have two children in that ensemble tonight. Our marching band in the direction of Mr. Keith Lee just wrapped up a very successful season. Due to some last-minute increases to activity bus fees, our wonderful band will not be able to march in the Concord Christmas Parade, nor will they be able to attend any away games. I would like to share a post from social media last week from West Cabarrus fans on this topic. The Concord Christmas Parade will have significantly less local bands represented this year. Why? A segment of Cabarrus County bands have decided to skip this event after significant bus fee changes were made after the start of the year. In addition, Cabarrus County charges higher mileage rates to clubs and organizations that are not athletic. In fact, it costs bands more to travel to an event that isn't related to an athletic event. The change in mileage charges is not given back to the bus drivers and essentially subsidizes the cost of bus for athletic teams. These fees are decided by the School Board and the City Council and burden families and students in non-athletic events. As a taxpayer, we pay the city for the use of buses and then pay more as parents who raise booster club funds. The cost of bus use should be equal for all school groups and not rated by group designation. So I'm unsure if that is completely true, but I do know for a fact that the bus rates have indeed changed and not in our favor. Mr. Lee, our band teacher, shared the following information with us on August 18th. Driver wait went from $30 an hour to $49.04 per hour. There's also a $2 per mile fee. It's my understanding that athletics pay less per mile, and the coaches usually drive the buses, so I'm unsure if they would pay that same rate per hour. The schools and athletics conferences here are much farther away from one another, and I feel like the rates could be related to that, so I'm unsure of that, and I would love us to, you know, understand. I would be interested in knowing who proposed the fee increase and who approved it. Not only does it affect our bands, you know, it affects field trips and enrichment activities for students of all ages. I would also like to update you on the records request I made on 417 almost seven months ago now. I have received documents on 422, 616, and 923, but my request has not yet been filled in full. So I would also update on that. I haven't written anything lately on that. Thank you guys for listening to me, and I look forward to hearing from any of you. I welcome it.
Thank you for sharing this, thank you for sharing those concerns. Okay, board members, we'll move on to section nine, which is reports section. And nine point oh one is the Coltrane Web STEM Boundary Process Update, and Dr. Jonathan Bauer is coming back to the podium.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kipiki. Wanted to meet with you tonight and bring you up to speed with where we stand with the Coltrane Web STEM Elementary School Boundary Project. The month of November is now upon us, and we're going to see several key events start to certainly populate the calendar. And so as we go through each and every event, I want to make sure certainly the board and our community is informed of what is up next, what is to be shared when, and then certainly what timeline exists before what we hope will be a successful completion of the project itself. For tonight, just a brief overview, to be able to give some, some old information which we've seen before as a general reminder, and then some other things that we have now to be able to share with the board that have been some recent stakeholder input updates that certainly we want to use as we help to inform the decision moving forward. So we'll focus a little bit on the guiding criteria. We'll look again at the focus area of the Boundary Project itself. We'll then take a look at some of the stakeholder engagement feedback or survey data. And then lastly, we'll look at those key dates and key events that'll be coming up through the months of October, or excuse me, November, and then December. So really, just out of the gate, again, a key reminder is to say, as we go through this project, for all of the key contributors, and those have been a part of the planning elements, we want to look at this through the lens of four key base pillar themes. Those are going to be driven by utilization, the absolute fact that we want to make sure that buildings are being used as they were intended to be used. We want to look at this through the lens of what would be our feeder networks. When a decision is made, what impact then happens at the elementary, middle, and then high school levels? We want to look at proximity. As we're assigning students to schools and with any boundary effort, how far and distance that they have to travel is an important concept to keep in mind. And then we'll look at the demographics of the school. Does the makeup of the school, when possible, represent the makeup of the average makeup of the district as a whole? So as a reminder, this was really the area of focus that we began with. And so what you see here at the center of this graphic, in the highlighted yellow area with the star, is the boundary for the current Coltrane Web STEM Elementary Schools. And so at the outset, in August, we began looking at those schools that were adjacent to the current boundary as possible considerations as we look for what might be a new boundary consideration or a new boundary proposal. Here you can see those schools identified on this map. They would be WM Irvin, Royal Oaks, Weinclough Elementary, Weddington Hills Elementary, and then Coltrane Web STEM Elementary. So primarily, we're talking about a school that its future boundary will serve the northern part of the downtown Concord area. So really, it's going to include some areas that were once part of the former Beverly Hills Elementary School, which is to be expected. But to what extent yet, we're still looking to be able to have that information available so we can share it out in an upcoming date with the community and then with the board. Also too, one thing that we want to make sure that we are certainly able to communicate is that, given the fact that Arbrown McAllister Elementary School came online back in the 2425 school year, that particular school itself is not being considered for any boundary effort here. The families, the neighborhoods there, we certainly recognize that they went through a boundary project back in the start of the 2425 school year. So there is no consideration now for inclusion of those families in this project. So we just want to make sure that they're aware of that. One of the things I mentioned previously was the former Beverly Hills Elementary School Boundary. And so what you see here on this graphic is that boundary defined. It would be that gridded area or that hatched area that you see on the map. So it really lies to the north and to the northeast primarily of the current Coltrane Web STEM Elementary School Boundary. And we highlight that to say that as we look to expand some possible scenario considerations is that there will be families certainly that will be a part of a new boundary effort. And we've said at the outset too, as a commitment to the families that were served by the former Beverly Hills Elementary School, that we want to make sure we're intentional and give them the opportunity to attend the new school if that indeed is their desire to do so. So again, we're closely monitoring that and tracking that, and we'll have that data available to be able to help drive with where we land with the final recommendation. Here, these are the planning block numbers. The beauty of the planning block is that it lets us take a little bit more of a granular look at the actual makeup of certain neighborhoods in geographic areas. So within each elementary school or middle school or high school boundary, those boundaries are further decided into, divided into blocks. And the blocks contain a certain number of students that we can identify by grade level. We can certainly identify, you know, the proximity to the school that that particular area may lie. We can look at the current school assignment, and then we can also do some projections and forecasts with what additional school assignments might look like. So the planning block is really the smallest unit we would then use for consideration when building out a bigger boundary. So really think of it as a piece to a puzzle as you're certainly looking to generate or create a larger puzzle. So there's a vast distribution with number of families and number of students that live within this. And you can see here, these are just elementary age students within these respective planning blocks, and that number was captured at the 20th day of our enrollment this year. So that's a snapshot that would be used to drive what might be possible enrollment for any boundary consideration. You've seen these graphics before, but I think it is worth a reminder, go back and look. What were the things at the outset that from our stakeholders, they said, hey, we need to honor this, we need to be aware of this, and this needs to be somewhat considered throughout the each stage of the project? So from our board, you could see there, communication was critical, and that certainly is something that was certainly noted with the feedback we solicited from you. A commitment to the Beverly Hills families, certainly those recognizing that giving an option to return, as I said, would be built within the actual models that we have moving forward. Keeping the project focused, avoid expanding it any farther than what is necessary. And then timelines and feeder patterns were other areas of certainly importance that emerged. When we look at the internal review team, which was made up of district staff and certainly has helped guide and help be able to really refine some of the boundary considerations. For them, they want to say utilization is important, being able to, again, as at the outset, make sure that this building is being used as it was intended to be used, making sure that, again, communication is clear. We see that pop up on multiple areas here within the internal review team's feedback, and then making sure that we're mindful of the enrollment options and what programmatic options would be available to students. When we surveyed the community, you can see there, once again, communication came forth loud and clear, but also too, minimizing the number of students that would be double impacted, meaning they would have been moved twice within a, within a several-year span. In this case, it would be basically a two- to three-year window. So trying to find ways to reduce the likelihood that great number of students would have to find another elementary school to attend while they're in their elementary school sequence. And then obviously, you can see proximity was an important factor. So we were able to reach out to the families of the former Beverly Hills Elementary students and then ask from those families, what would be their intent? And when I say intent, we actually sent a survey that indicated or asked if you were domiciled, if your residence is not included in the new boundary. So for any family that might be outside the boundary, would your intent be to stay at your current assignment or to attend the new school? So that's the way in which this survey information was collected. We did that to get a sense of what might be the influx of students from outside the boundary that might decide to attend, because we would want to keep that number in mind as we look for any particular recommendation that we bring forward. And so for the 136 families that we were able to reach out to, you can see here, 90% we confirmed that 90% of those, which about 122 families, actually received the communication. And that's something we could track, and we appreciate our communications team for assisting in this effort. We did get a 35% response rate, so we heard back from 48 of the families as to what their intent might be. And you can see there that 71% said, if my domicile is outside the boundary, then I would prefer to remain at my current school assignment. 29% of those respondents said, hey, if my domicile or boundaries, excuse me, if my home is outside the boundary that is determined, I would like to attend the new school. So that'll really help us for informational purposes and for planning as we move forward. The other piece to this that was important was also, we could take this and look at it by location. So again, I mentioned the planning blocks earlier. So when we look at our planning blocks and where the respondents certainly came from and where we saw what generated the greatest number of surveys that we received, we could see for the, those who elected to say, if I'm outside the boundary, I'd like to stay at my school, you can see the breakdown there. The area just immediately north of Coltrane Web, if you will, and slightly to the east, there were 17 families who say, if my boundary is, you know, excuse me, my domicile is outside the boundary, I want to stay at my current school. That's where we saw the heaviest participation here, and then you can see the breakdown. Also, we were able to then track those families that were also saying, I want to attend the new school, and where might they hail from? So this gives us an idea too of where might be the largest area of concentration that would be students attending the new elementary school. And so just a synopsis there at the bottom is to be expected that the greatest number of responses, 90% of them, came from Irvin Elementary School. There was a small but consistent group that we saw was going to be committed to attending the new Coltrane Web, and we did see that within the results themselves, when there were siblings involved, that the choice of the siblings were aligned, whether that be to attend and/or remain. When we look at it by grade level, currently, right now, we have two first graders who, again, I'm sure that there were reasons that they're still in the first grade, but they would be rising second graders next year that had attended the former Beverly Hills Elementary School. Both of those families indicated an intent to stay. When we look at the third graders, you can see now that number changes from nine elected to say we want to stay to having five that want to attend the new school. And then we can break it down by fourth, and then obviously fifth, which is where we see the greatest interest in remaining, because those rising fifth graders next year obviously would be at a grade that would be a terminal grade for them. And certainly, the provision of the board in the past, Board Policy 4150, has been to allow students that would be in those terminal grades to remain at their current So taking us back to where the project began, if we think back August, which seems like eons ago, but really wasn't, we became, came to the board, we presented the kickoff and what the project itself would look like. Then through the months of September, we started meeting with some of our stakeholder groups, and we started meeting with some of our internal review teams, providing an update with the board as to what the project would entail. You could see the internal review team work starts to begin. We held our first community meeting, and then we started the survey piece to this project as well, so that we made sure that we had recipients' information on the front end that would help inform the work as we went through it. Throughout the month of October, you can see we just wrapped that up, another presentation before the board, and then other internal review teams where they were continuing to refine the work that would happen that would ultimately land and become the boundary recommendation. And then the month of November that is now ahead of us. So tonight, an update that is being provided, we will have our second community meeting on Wednesday of this week. That will be at 6:00 PM at Arbrown McAllister Elementary School. And the community at that event will be able to see the boundary recommendation, and they will also have an online map available such that they can then go in, put in their address, and see whether or not they would certainly be impacted by that recommendation as well. We'll also have some maps there as well to be able to walk the audience and the attendees through what areas would be the defined parameters of the boundary itself, and certainly what neighborhoods would be considered. And then obviously, we'll answer any questions that they may have about the project and what looms ahead. You see, then we'll have another internal review team meeting later this month, and then we'll be positioned to bring before the board on December the first, the formal boundary recommendation, which then allows for public comment at the December 8th meeting. And then what we would ask is then a board vote for on December 8th as well. And the last item we've included in there is the program choice timeline. Knowing that Coltrane Web STEM Elementary is a school that has programmatic opportunities for students outside the boundary, we certainly aligning this with that timeline is beneficial to those families such that they can make an informed decision as that deadline approaches. This is just a graphic of that same timeline, just puts it more in a visual sense so that you can see these key events as they occur. And with that, I will certainly pause and entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, board members.
Okay, board members, any questions? We'll start. On this side, anybody? Nope, on this side. All right, well, I guess the only question here, it says, it says, two slides back.
Yes, sir.
You say, maps and boundary recommendations are available on Engage with CCS today, is that?
That is correct. Later tonight, we will be posting those as well, so the community will have a chance to review and see them in advance of the meeting on Wednesday.
So they can find that on the website?
That is correct.
When this meeting's over, or when are you, when are you going to post it?
30 seconds ago.
What, 30 seconds ago it was?
Okay, so it's, it's on there now.
I'm giving you old news now, so.
Okay, and we just want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to see that, get their questions answered, and then come to us if they've got
Yes, sir.
Questions, concerns, alternatives.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I appreciate the, the report, and we'll look forward to hearing from you in December and at the community meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, moving on to our next item, which is our consent agenda. So these are items that were discussed last week that the board, I guess, has enough information, we're all comfortable with, so we could vote on them as one package. Any comments, changes to the consent agenda? If not, I'd need a motion in a second.
We have adopted the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Tredaway. Thank you, Pam. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? All right, consent agenda has passed, and we'll move on to our next section, which is the items for action. And we have a few of those, so number one is our paging project. So 11.01, capital fund paging project, and this was discussed a little bit last week. Board members had some questions, and I'll leave it back up to you to see what you found out last week.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Kupicki, and members of the board. Yes, I'd like to just revisit some of the questions that came up last week. I spoke with my internal team throughout the course of the week to address some of those questions, actually spoke to some just a little bit ago this evening, just to make sure that we had covered all of our bases. I would like to reiterate that on Slide 4 of this presentation, not only was this, did this bid represent the lowest overall bid, it also received the highest scores on our internal rubric that we used. That internal rubric covered technical sufficiency, vendor experience, ineligible costs, and also technical support. So our team felt strong from a technical standpoint that the contracts covered what we needed it to. I'd also like to reiterate that we will have Cabarrus County Schools staff on site during each of these projects, so we'll have a technician on site working with the vendor as they're, as they're working through this project. Most of the concerns from the scope of work exclusions fall into one of, the way I categorize them into four categories. One concern was troubleshooting of existing issues, so we are not replacing the entire paging system. So some of the exclusions had to do with wiring, with intercoms that were broken, with zone systems. So when we use the paging system to send an announcement down the math hallway or to the gym, one of the exclusions is they would not be rerouting or redesigning that program. Another set of exclusions was around the electrical work and the infrastructure. We do not expect the vendor to supply their own power, for instance, for this project. A third set of exclusions had to do with the network and communications connections, so we would prefer that our own staff make any connections to the network as opposed to a third-party vendor making those connections. And then the fourth part had to do with safety training and background checks, those background checks. So for one thing, we will have a Cabarrus County Schools staff member with them at all times. They will also sign into lobby guard, just like any visitor. When a visitor signs into lobby guard, it automates a background check process. So we felt like we had addressed most of the concerns unless there are other questions that arise.
Appreciate those updates, board members. Ms. Freeman, I think you had one of the questions. Did you get your questions answered?
And yes, I appreciate your getting back to us on this. Bottom line is, any of those exclusions, our techni, our technology class, I mean, group would, would take over, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right. It would either be our technology team, or it could be if it was a power component or an accessibility component, it could technically be our facilities team.
So there wouldn't be the extra expense to us?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I did have one question. So you had mentioned, I guess, last week that there's a four-year or three, five-year plan, you're trying to make a four-year plan?
The, the original goal was a five-year plan, try to get eight to nine schools done every year. That would be replacing the entire system.
Okay, well, this bid was for 15 schools, correct?
That's correct, so.
So you're going to do another RFP next time, or what, how do you, how do we go forward with the next group of schools?
So essentially, the system, the, the system as currently designed is an analog system that relies on cards that are incredibly difficult and expensive to replace. The goal is to move to a digital system on the main central brains of each piece. Instead of replacing all of the wires, which was the original ask, that we were expecting was somewhere around $4 million, that might take five years of $800,000. If we just replace that centralized brain, the head-end part of the system, we can actually replace this at about half the cost, so.
I, I think, at least I understood that part, it's, but again, it's $2 million to replace all the schools. Ms. Sescu mentioned there were some schools that we didn't need to do.
That's right.
But you still have a number of schools to, to do. So next time, there was, you're putting this in a budget for another $800,000, or what?
That's right. The goal would be, we, we try to replace as much as we can this year with $800,000. Ideally, we would request $800,000 again as we, as we try to.
So you wouldn't want to just put, do them all and get them done at the same time?
The, our original capital request at the time was thinking that we would need somewhere around $4 million, and that that would not likely be approved.
Now reduced it to two.
That's right.
So can we expect a $2 million ask or in the upcoming budget for the 15 more schools? Is that what the, or are we asking, are you going to be coming back for the rest of them? Or has that decision not been made?
So this will be part of our capital request for this next school year. We can either ask for another $800,000 to, to eliminate another tranche of schools, or it could be that we ask for a 1.2 million to, to bring the rest of the schools up to the same process. We didn't, when we asked for $800,000 in capital, we did not anticipate being able to get $4 million to upgrade them all.
So what we're going to do is assess this at the end of this, Mr. Walter. So we'll finish these schools here, the 15 that was asked for, for the price you see there, I think $791 and change. We will assess, based upon the approvals by the board, we're going to assess this at the end of this project, because we're also going to take a look at some of the newer schools that are in line that do not need it. So it would be kind of, you're probably somewhere between $800,000, I would say, $2 million for the rest of the schools. I don't want to pin a number on it, because we want to, to your point, we want to assess appropriately what schools need and what don't. And we have also three schools coming online that are brand-new. So there's some, there's some good situations occurring that are probably going to save us some cost based on the, the new construction of our schools.
Right. Well, my thought process is if these are critical to the safety of the school, that we need to focus on the safety of the school.
We will definitely.
Items and not, not just piecemeal it, but that's
Yeah.
Understanding what we have in front of us, is right now it's 15 schools. You've got a, a vendor, you're recommending the vendor, you're looking for our approval for that.
And it will be a budget item in the fall, excuse me, in the spring.
And how long is this going to take them to get these 15 schools completed?
The goal is to, if this is approved today, then we can get the paperwork going on Wednesday, and then the goal would be to initiate this first school before the end of the month.
So within?
So through, probably through early spring.
Okay. All right, well, those are my questions. I'd need a motion in a second to approve this item.
I'll make that motion that we accept this proposal.
Thank you, Sam.
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the, the capital funds for the paging project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to the architect recommendation for the Northwest Elementary School project, and we have Brian Cohen at the podium, welcome, Brian.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, welcome back, members of the board. Nice to see you again, Dr. Kupicki. Last week, I presented the process for the procurement of professional services, which include architectural, engineering, and surveying through the issuance of a multi-year request for qualification. It was our recommendation last week to approve YCH Architects of Concord, North Carolina for the new Northwest area elementary school project. I did not receive any questions throughout the week, but I'd be happy to answer any right now if you have them.
Board members, can you go through your justification again on why, why this firm's recommended?
Sure, yes, so the, do you want the RFQ process, or what would you like, of why we're recommending YCH?
Yes.
Okay. So YCH had previously designed two elementary schools for us using the same prototype design, the Arbrown McAllister STEM School Project, as well as the currently ongoing project of Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School. By the use of utilizing YCH Architects, we will be able to capitalize on the design efficiencies, reduce timelines, and cost savings associated with the use of this prototype design.
Okay, and you had them as a top-ranked firm?
Yes, we did.
And you anticipate being able to negotiate a contract if not, because the second-ranked firm?
That is correct. With this approval tonight, we will begin negotiating the fee and contract structure with them to bring that back before you for approval at the December meeting.
How many responses did you have for the RFQ?
We had five responses through this three, three-year RFQ process. We have five different firms that we are able to choose from.
So you, five were qualified, and you're in five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, board members, any further comments? If not, I'd need a motion to approve the recommendation of Yates-Creutzberg Architects for the Northwest Elementary School Project.
Senator.
Thank you, Ms. Lena Castor, thank you, Mr. Tredaway. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All right, so all in favor, please say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? All right, that motion passes, and then you'll bring back a contract to us at the next step.
Do my best, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to 11.03, which is a resolution authorizing the condemnation process to acquire property for the Northwest Elementary School project that we just talked about, and Mr. Eisenhower and Mr. Cohen.
Yes, so we have before you tonight in your agenda packet a resolution authorizing this Board of Education to proceed with the acquisition of the property we've been discussing along Sudbury Road for this new elementary school. The acquisition of this property would be through condemnation after we've made several unsuccessful attempts to negotiate a fair contract under normal circumstances. I will reiterate to you that it's at the request of the heirs of the estate of this property that we go through with this process because of some impending litigation that they had and that the hopes that this will facilitate moving forward. It is imperative that we get this piece of property because of the growth in the enrollment that we see north of Highway 73 in that part of the county. We had made several attempts on about six different properties from 73 all the way up to the very corner, northwest corner of the county, to try and acquire other pieces of property. For various reasons, they would not talk to us, they weren't interested in selling, some did not have infrastructure and utilities that supported the sites and were cost prohibitive for us to even consider. The Sudbury Road property does have utilities in both water and sewer in close proximity. It has the right amount of acreages, the right amount of acreage to support the school, so that's why we're bringing this before you tonight.
Okay, Mr. Eisenhower, what do you have to add?
Yes, that's right. So Brian did a good job of setting forth, you know, why this property is a good property for us. The, the ask tonight, the recommended action, is a motion for this board to adopt the resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 40A-3 and Chapter 115C. The reason this comes before the Board of Education is because we have the power of condemnation for school sites. So the ask tonight is to have that motion, a second, and a vote adopting the resolution that's on the screen now.
Okay, Dr. Kupicki, do you have anything else to add? Okay, board members, now it's time for questions. Pam.
Thank you. I just want to read something that I received from a member of the public, because for some people, this caught them off-guard. And I just want to, I would like you to explain why it's happening like this. But she wrote, "I believe it will negatively impact our community in terms of traffic." She's saying this specific location, "safety and conservancy. Once you build a school there, the housing boom will follow, and the problem will not be solved. You will just have overloaded Odell School Road from three different schools." So what is your response to, to the public who weren't able to attend but live over there and are very concerned about what, what this does to that area?
Well, I mean, it's true, we do impact communities, but I think we impact them favorably. And the, the impact that we have on the, the road infrastructures for any given project are, are minimal in terms of the times of day. You know, you're 30 or 45 minutes in the morning, you're 30 or 45 minutes in the afternoon. You know, we bring to the community amenities that we allow the community to use, whether it's in playgrounds or parks, or walking trails, or things of that nature. You know, we welcome those as a part of our partnership with these communities. And, and we go through an extensive process with the North Carolina Department of Transportation in making sure that we align what the school needs are with the community that we're impacting so that we can mitigate those, those, those concerns that the community has in terms of how the traffic is. Listen, it's, traffic's bad out there. I mean, but that comes with the growth. And, you know, we do all we can with the money that we're afforded to be able to support that and mitigate it as best we can.
And talk about how this school and this location will address the, the growth and how difficult it is to find a
Piece of property?
Yeah, over there.
Yeah, so again, we, for, for almost two years now, we've been actively pursuing land in this part of the county. And we've looked at, we had other pieces of property that we felt may work better, but we could not get any interest from those property owners to communicate with us or have an interest in selling to us. And so we kind of have to pick those off as we go through this process. And at the end of the day, it gets down to the, the development cost in terms of how close water and sewer are to us. And it's a very unique part of the county. On the southern side, just north of Highway 73, there's tons of water, there's tons of sewer, but there's also tons of houses. And there's no large tracts of land that are available to us to be able to put a school. You know, we need 10 to, depending on the grade change, we need 10 to 20 acres of land to be able to put a school. You know, you look at what we're trying to accomplish at Coltrane Webb on that nine-acre site, and it's challenging. So, you know, this piece of property, again, just rose to the top through just the, the checks and balances of all the other pieces that we were looking at, that we could actually get a communication with those properties owners on.
And last question, this resident also was asking that we postponed this. How would that hurt this process if we didn't vote tonight?
Can I?
Sure. Have at it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't mind, but.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, so there, there is a timeline that has been given to us by our county commissioners in what we need to provide them in order to fund this project. If we do not meet that timeline and this gets delayed further, the school will not open in the time that we've been presenting, and it will only exacerbate the problem that we see in that part of the county.
And to, and to be clear, I'm sorry.
Dr. Kupicki, want to add something?
Oh, go ahead.
I would just read everything Mr. Cohen said. The other thing I want to remind the board and the community of is we are packed at both Odell Prime and Odell, and at Odell Elementary. And I do believe you're going to have to cap those schools before we build this school. So if that isn't a big part of the sense of urgency, I'm not sure I understand, you know, what people want us to. You need a school up there. I think we all know that we need a school up there, and to a lot of the points that Brian has made, you know, the population is growing, and some of those things we can't control. But we are in desperate need of a, a new school up in that, that area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sescu.
And lastly, to what our attorney shared with us, normally, the county would be doing this, and we wouldn't, like, it's not a school board decision, or it is just, it is still a
This is a strict, this is a school board decision.
Okay.
Yes, the condemnation is only the school board, only this body has to be obligated to get in for school purposes, so that's what's before us.
And we've communicated this with the county, and they are supportive of it.
All right, great. Mr. Mills?
Just a real quick question. With 33 acres, we're confident we'll be able to get the car rider line completely on that property and not backing out onto the street?
Yes, sir. We will, we will have enough queue and capacity internally on that site to be able to, I guess you, you never know. I mean, if you see an abundance of growth all of a sudden, but yes, we, we would design, I mean, if you see an abundance of growth all of a sudden, but yes, we would design, we're given guidelines by the Municipal School Transportation Assistant Group, which is the North Carolina Department of Transportation governing body for school impacts on the road network. So they say this is what you need to have, and we generally go a little bit above that in terms of laying out what that lineal footage is.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on my left, anybody over here, questions? All right, couple that I had was, I guess, related to what Dr. Kopecky had mentioned, that we have an overcrowded school.
Yes, sir.
In that whole area, we've got to do something. We have county commissioners that are willing to help fund this school now, but if we don't have a piece of property or a piece of land to do the bill of school, we're going to lose that opportunity.
That's correct.
So we've got to do something. This is apparently a property owner that's working with us or wants us to
That is correct, yes, sir.
Move forward in this direction. Nobody's losing their home because it's an estate.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And by not moving forward here, we're, who knows how long it would be before we could acquire that property, may lose that funding, and the whole issue with the design would be mute because it would be on that site, so
Correct.
I see the, I understand the urgency, I think of it, but again, the public has a right to question us about why we're moving this process and not doing a, you know, a typical acquisition like we have for most of our other schools.
Sure, but with, again, the estate heirs that are owners of the property have asked us to go through this process. It's not as if we're going against their will and taking them from
And it could be a developer that's going to put high-density housing or anything else over there as well. It's going to get built out at some point, so
That's correct.
And it's in a location that you all said is the best location for a school
Yes, sir.
Would be in this vicinity, so
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that answers my questions for this. Board members, we do need a motion in a second.
I'm prepared to make that motion, that we approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tredaway. Anybody second that?
A second.
Mr. Mills? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, we have a no, no vote there, six to one, and that's Mrs. Freeman.[1737.32]